We're good.
Good.
We're live.
Ready to go? Welcome, everybody, to the work session October 13th. I'd like to start this evening with a pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This is now our audit committee meeting, our annual external audit.
Great, well, thank you. My name is Dave Teller. I'm the external audit partner from Rocky Smith. We were contracted by the district before the audit of the financial statements for the year in June 30th, 2020. We also performed a single audit of the district's major federal award programs that seem fiscal year-end, as well as an audit of the district's extracship and activity funds on a cash basis of accounting. And we used our man card letter for the main financial recommendations that we have to go through on internal controls. I'm just going to push through the presentation myself. I can draw that reference. So before I get into going through with the financial statements, I always like to talk about the conduct of the audit. So again, as everybody knows, this was a very unusual year, especially for us in trying to perform audit engagement with the district. We kind of, at the beginning in our planning stages, we worked with management, kind of come up with a plan of conducting the field work in a remote capacity as well as on sites. We kind of did like a hybrid approach where we, where the management uploaded a lot of documents and records to us. We would kind of go through them, make our selections. We'd ask for other things. They would kind of pack them up in a box. Come onsite, go through them, pick them up, bring them, go through everything. So we really appreciate, obviously, all the efforts by the business office to help assist us because although, you know, we had a lot of things going against us, we still had the October 15 deadline. So we set it in our plan to make sure that we were going to meet that deadline, which we will. But in doing so, obviously, our audit engagement took longer than usual. So because of those procedures going back and forth. But the business office, once again, did a tremendous job, led by Jackie and Deborah, you know, managing all of our requests, getting us all the records, putting us in touch with the necessary people that we need to speak to and go through things. So again, they have to still manage the district on a day-to-day basis and do their daily duties. But then we come in and really add a lot of person to their schedule. But again, they did a tremendous job. We really appreciate all the efforts there. And I think the biggest thing is just because of this, a lot of comments that I got were, well, did your risk change in the audit engagement? How are you comfortable with how everything was presented? Because again, it's in a kind of a hybrid model. And based on our preliminary assessment of risk, everything that we identified as being a risk or associated to a risk, we were able to review adequately. We were comfortable with the records that we obtained. And we were able to mitigate all of those issues that we saw as possible risk. So it required no other further investigation or anything other than what we initially saw as it. So just wanted to make sure I made the committee aware of that. And then just kind of going through the financial statements. I kind of broke it down in the section that I've done in previous years. So the first two pages is our auditor's opinion, which was a clean and unmodified opinion on the financial statements. The next 10 pages, pages three through 13, is the management's discussion and analysis section. This provides a general overview and analysis of the financial statements as well as compares financial data index of last year's numbers and operating results, as well as addresses any key differences from last year to this year. Again, I only believe the management's discussion and analysis is a really helpful tool to anybody who is not familiar with the financial statements of the district. Because if you could read those 10 pages, it gives you a really good understanding of the differences of what I'm going to talk about in a couple of minutes between the two separate sets of financial statements, as well as some of the key highlights that occurred at the district and things that will affect the district going into the future. So those type of pages really give you a great understanding of financial statements. After the management's discussion and analysis section is the first set of financial statements, which is called the district-wide financial statements. These are on a full accrual basis of accounting. So this has all of your capital assets, all of your long-term debt. All of those items are consolidated into these financial statements to give you like a full financial picture similar to a for-profit corporation. So some of the things I want to highlight here is just, you can see that the working capital as well as the current ratio, which are things that we always measure on, on the accounting side, improved from last year to this year. And that was primarily due to the increase in cash at the end of the year as a result of decreased spending because of the COVID-19 in the last quarter of the fiscal year. So as a result of that, obviously, it made the financial picture look a little better on a full accrual basis. You have total capital assets net of depreciation of $34.9 million, which with a current year net increase is just under $100,000. So your capital outlay or purchases of equipment exceeded your depreciation charges within the year of about $100,000. And the biggest thing that we've added off of the balance sheet over the last few years is called the other post-employment benefit obligation, which for the end of the year, all other post-employment benefit obligations with the term OPEC-related items totaled $41 million, which is a long-term liability with a current year increase of about $1.1 million. So now this number is really, it's calculated by an actuary that the district hires. However, it's really an accounting adjustment to the full accrual numbers. And I say that because the district cannot reserve any monies towards this long-term obligation. You cannot set aside any monies for this obligation either. The only thing it can do is pay, you know, pay as it comes due. So all your current outlay relating to this obligation is about $855,000. So that's the amount that is an actual cash outflow for the year in terms of this obligation. And that continues to be paid on an ongoing basis and currently. For the current year, in relation to this, because it did have that big increase, some of the things changed on the actuarial side. The biggest thing being the discount rate that they utilized. So they went from a 3.5% discount rate to a 2.21% discount rate. And that was really a change that was done industry-wide by the actuaries to conform with the actual account pronouncement that oversaw this implementation of OPEC. After the full accrual statements is the governmental fund financial statements. Those are the funds that are managed by the district on a day-to-day basis. The district has, I believe, four governmental funds. Each one is utilized for a specific purpose. The general fund is kind of the overall fund that's utilized based on the budget of the year and by the OPEC. So that fund had total assets of $18.28 million at the end of the year with total liabilities of $3 million, which are all comparable to the previous year, which left us with fund balance of about $15.8 million. Of that fund balance, there's different classifications. There is the unassigned, unappropriated. So that's utilized by the district go forward at their discretion, total of $2.9 million. You have $830,000 in assigned funds. These are monies that are used to balance next year's budget as well as encumbrances that carry over from the current year to the next year, which are expenditures that just have not been received by the district by June 30th. And then you have $12 million of restricted funds with a large portion of that being in your capital reserve fund and in your retirement contribution reserve fund as well. For the year on an operating basis, the general fund had a positive change in fund balance of about $2.4 million. Comparing the budget, the revenues were over budget by about $349,000. And your expenditures run the budget by about $3.4 million. Again, as I spoke before, obviously, there was some savings towards the end of the fiscal year because of the in-school construction shutdown. So many districts, obviously, save the monies on that side with the understanding that a large portion of that is being spent in the summer to get ready for the new fiscal years and to deal with students back into the classroom. The next fund is the capital projects fund. That's the fund that manages all the capital projects throughout the district. Here, you can see that your assets is about $315,000 with a little bit of about $4,000 in liabilities, giving you a fund balance of about $310,000 for maybe two ongoing future projects. For the year, you had about $1.3 million in capital outlay, which represented the amount of money spent on the capital projects on a district-wide basis. The next fund is the special aid fund. This is a fund that's utilized for the federal and state grants that are administered throughout the district. These are reimbursable grants, so there is no fund balance or there is no net income or loss for the year. So it's a self-balancing fund. So your assets will equal your liabilities as well as your revenues will equal your expenditures. For the most part, again, these are fully reimbursable grants, except there are some grants, like the summer school handicap program, where there is a subsidized portion that comes from the general fund to meet that as a whole. So that's the other financing sources of about $62,000 that came from the general fund and outside fund. The next fund is the school lunch fund, which obviously looks after the food nutrition program here at the district. You have total revenues of about $350,000 to about $348,000 in expenses. You had a slight increase for the year of $23,000 within that fund. Again, you could see that there was some decreased variances from last year to this year, again, because of losing those three months towards the end of the year, you know, for serving meals and charging them. The last fund, which isn't a fund anymore, but the district used to have a bit like that service fund, which was closed at the end of last year. So this just shows that the full closing of it at the end of the year. After the governmental funds is the fiduciary fund financial statements. These are the monies that the district holds in a fiduciary trustee capacity. It's mainly extracship and activity funds, scholarship funds, things of that nature. The district cannot utilize these funds to pay its bills. So these are in a fiduciary type of a fund and set aside. The presentation here is not changed from previous year. After the fiduciary funds are the notes to the financial statements, which gives the reader a more detailed understanding of the county policies as well as some detailed information around certain larger balances, like your capital assets, long-term obligations, pension plans, and your other post-employment benefit obligation. The presentation here, again, is consistent with the previous year. And the notes here are, I'd like to mention that they're in accordance with the New York State Education Department guidelines. So every year, the New York State Education Department issues what they call their reference manual, which is pretty much a template of the way in which they would like the financial statements to be formatted and laid out. So we make sure that the notes and the financial statements adhere to that so that we are in harmony with what the education department is looking for. After the notes are supplementary schedules. Again, the presentation is consistent here. Some of these schedules are required by the governmental account standards board. And then some are required by the New York State Education Department. So again, these schedules are consistent with the previous year. There have been no changes or edited schedules like there have been over the last few years. So we like to see the consistency there from one year to the other. Then it goes into the extracship and activity funds. I mentioned earlier, we perform the audit on a cash basis of accounting. So it's just cash in and cash out to the clubs. We review the financial transaction within all the clubs here. And we issued an unmodified clean opinion on the extracship and activity funds as presented.
Can you just explain that for a minute? Clean opinion?
Uh huh. So a clean opinion is, it pretty much is stating that the way in which the financial statements are presented for us is not only in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. You know, like your main statements are more on the accrual basis of accounting, where these are the cash basis of accounting and those are all segregated out. And it also means that we conducted our audits in accordance with generally accepted financial statements. So it's pretty much a clean, so to speak. You know, that's the type of opinion you want. If we had issues, it would be a modified opinion. And we disclose to you what those issues were that we found that either couldn't lead us to obtain clarity or supporting occupation for certain numbers and things of that nature.
Thank you.
And then kind of rounding out the report is the federal single audit. Again, because the district received more than $750 in federal funds for the year, we had to perform a single audit, which is not only a financial audit, but it's also a compliance-based audit depending on the program. So we looked at the various federal funds that were received by the district and going through the criteria. We select what we call as a major program. And for this year, we selected the Section 611 and 619 programs which relate to special education. So we looked at those programs again, not just on the financial base, but also the compliance that surrounds those specific programs, which is given to us by the Office of Management Budget, the one and it's called the Uniform Guide. And it's a compliance supplement. So we go through that depending on each specific grant has, they call it a CFA number that's specific to that grant. And within the compliance supplement, it tells you the types of compliance issues or activities that the district should have for that type of grant. And we have to make sure that everything is not there. In our audit of those programs, everything is found to be in order and informed with the compliance requirements. So we had no instances of non-compliance or question costs related to those. So again, for the federal award programs, we issued a clean and unmodified opinion on those. For the year, we just had, now switching gears just to the financial statements overall, we did have compliance findings relating to the late filing of the ST3, which I've talked about, that the need to file that is very unrealistic because you have to file in the early part of September, usually September 2nd or 3rd. We're still conducting the audit at that point. So the books and records technically are not closed. So the district usually, and with our agreement, will not file something that would not be final or a complete provision of what the district should have there. So they held off on that. It has been filed and it was complete. And this year, it was also exciting for excess fund balance. So you're only allowed to carry 4% of next year's budget in unassigned, unincorporated category because of the excess monies that were saved this year but being part of earmarked for the upcoming year. That pushes us over the 4% threshold. So I totally agree with the way in which everything was handled. All of my clients are in the same exact situation as you. It's not like you're unique in any which way. And but unfortunately, I have to cite it because it is what it is. But you know, I want to make sure that you guys got my take on it, that I agree with the district's standpoint of those two issues. Outside of that, the biggest thing I'd like to also talk about is in our reviews of all the internal controls over the financial reporting and the general ledger and looking at the transactions of the district, we found there to be no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We also did not come up with any current year recommendations or what I like to call suggestions, you know, to improve upon those internal controls, as well as the policies the districts have, that the district has in place relating to its financial transactions and things of that nature. So I like, always like to end with the clean, unmodified opinions. We have no suggestions or recommendations. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So the last thing I'd get out to convey to you is that this is a very clean and strong audit report that, you know, that we're giving to present to you this evening. But are you happy to answer any questions anyone has on anything relating to the audit of the financial statements?
Very straightforward. It sounds like we're operating at a high level. You're doing a great job.
We're not surprised.
We have the best business officials. And we have the best systems. Not always a good team.
No, it's a good issue. It really is. You know, we only get to see it for a short period of time. And we're looking at what happened over the course of the year. So but again, I think you have a very strong theme. You have a lot to be, you know, a lot to be proud of. And especially under the circumstances of how you're operating now and what the future looks like. At least you're positioned in a good spot to start, you know. But you know, I don't know where tomorrow is going to bring us. So you know, unfortunately. But but as of June 30th, you know, this is where we stand. And it certainly should be a very strong picture.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize also for the confusion coming with Zoom. We realized that it would be, it's very difficult to manage live streaming and the audience.
I'm sure. I listen, I would rather be in person. I would take this any day over Zoom or virtual talk. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Be well, everybody.
Deborah, thank you for everything you did.
I'm proud of you. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
She was fantastic. We are very lucky.
She didn't move somewhere, you know, and that's where she gets from you.
That's an outstanding report.
It puts us in a good spot. It puts us in a good spot financially.
Eventually, we're going to be facing. So you know, you price the rate that rainy days don't happen, but then you pray extra that you have what it takes to handle. You give us that opportunity to start off. And hopefully, the governor has a little force, you know, to help that out. So thank you.
You really are amazing. Excellent.
Really unbelievable. Great. Okay. So we can now go for a status of the hybrid model?
Okay, so. So we just wanted to, I'm going to ask Mrs. Heck to give a little report about how we're doing. But we also had put out, initially, when we offered parents the option of going full remote, we asked people to make a commitment to either keep their child out for planning purposes, either to the first marking period. We used the high school date for the first marking period, the elementary schools or our trimesters. So we used December 10th as the date in order to be well-prepared for students coming back, making sure that we have appropriate spacing, the desks organized in a particular way, ordering any additional barriers that we need to order. We sent out a survey last week. We, Friday was the deadline. We sent it out to parents who indicated that they wanted their children, they wanted their children out through November 10th. There's also parents that opted to keep their children out until the end of the first marking period, which is the end of January. I mean, I'm sorry, end of the first semester, which is the end of January. So this survey went out to those parents. We did not get all of the responses yet. Our parent coordinator is following up on making personal phone calls to parents. But right now, we have, I would say, less than 50% of our students would like to come back depending upon the building and the grade level. So I think there's a total of about 135 students on remote. And this tapped into, I don't remember the exact number, but it was, I think it was the smaller percentage, rightly, of families that wanted the first marking period. So it was about 30% of all of the students that were out. And about half of those now are, we don't have all the dates in, but it's not a very large number. We have 20 children definitely coming back at the junior senior high school. We have 16 that are pending. We have seven that are definitely returning to rain and six that are pending. And we have, and these are non-responses. So it's not out of the whole accrual number. These are just non-responders yet. And we have six definite coming back to center with three families still pending. So we think that's great that parents are feeling comfortable enough to want to send their kids back. I think there's various different reasons why parents choose to do that. Some are social reasons, some are feeling, a feeling of things are going well. You know, we did have the one case where we needed to close. But we're no, I think we're in as good shape as any other district, at least across Ohio. Depends on the area, the size, and a lot of factors go into it. But we so far have only that one case. We have had some cases where family members had become ill and so employees needed to quarantine. But those were contained and no one else was infected. And so I think, you know, we are in good shape. And so I'll just try to go over to Mona for a minute.
I think in many ways, we are now sort of settling in to the school year. There were so many unknowns as we began. But now we've gotten to a routine. School looks a lot like school normally looks. And it looks a lot different than it was. Right now, we're just in high school. It's very quiet, except using hoppers and students coming each day. You know, it's a very different environment. I think we talk a lot about how proud we are of our district or of our staff, and we should be. There's a lot of reason to be. And I think we've done this really, really well. And it's very challenging. And I don't think, as much as we've settled in, I think those challenges continue. You know, having hybrid learners who are not in every day and having some fully remote learners who are not in at all is a unique challenge and it's a significant challenge, especially when you start the school year that way, trying to create relationships and get into the routine of school with these challenges. But again, I think we should be very proud of what we're doing. School is moving forward. Instruction is moving forward. There's a lot of creativity going on. And a lot of the barriers and challenges have been overcoming. Some of the technology challenges, as much as we have terrific infrastructure for technology, there are daily glitches here and there. And we want to have access for all students all times. And it's always happened. But again, overall, I think we're doing a really significant amount of work to make this work well. And it's going. But we need to get students back in school eventually and get back to the normal school. But I think our teachers are, everybody's really stepped up and done a tremendous amount of work to make this, make this work.
I think we meet regularly with the teachers' union leadership. And I think it is hard for our teachers. I think they are struggling. And I think one of the main reasons they struggle, and I say this all the time, is try not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Because teachers want things to be perfect. They want their classrooms to run the way they've always run. They want to continue to do great things in their classrooms, to do cooperative activities, to work, have children working groups for them to meet in small groups, to individualize instruction. Some of those things are just not possible due to COVID, due to the pandemic, due to the, you know, health and safety restrictions and the social distancing that we have to put in place. And that, I think, is what's challenging teachers. Of course, they want to know that they're connecting with all students. And that's hard. We knew that our students who are on a full remote model would not be getting the same experience that children who were coming in on alternate days would be able to get because we can't replicate that. We cannot, it's impossible to replicate that one-to-one, face-to-face instruction that we, that our kids who are on the hybrid model can have every other day or every two days. They may not have it every day, but the teacher has a relationship with them when they are in the classroom. And when they are in the classroom, the quality of the instruction we know is better. It's present, it's personal, it's physically, there's just no alternative for being physically present. We all know it because we've experienced all the Zoom meetings. And Mr. Volus just said, we like in-person because you connect differently. And so it continues to be a challenge. And thank you, Mona, for, you know, for outlining how things are going. But we, we are hearing and seeing that some districts are beginning to bring students back full-time in, you know, bringing all students in and not having a hybrid model. You know, that people wouldn't hear is working toward that. I don't know if that's going to start. Fellow America has at their high school level, I believe also as an aside, the commissioner helped children go to the commissioner helped children go to, um, Mr. Dr. Mike's team to go to Fellow Merrick. So, I'm sure they're doing things well. Um, and we are looking into and speaking with those districts about how they, um, how they did it, how it's going. Um, we discuss this, are discussing this with our teachers' union. They had done an internal survey, um, asking people how safe they felt, teachers, how safe they felt, and, uh, on a Likert scale of, uh, one to five, everyone answered, I don't have the, um, exact numbers, but three and above, which is a good sign. Teachers, for the most part, feel safe in school. And so, uh, we, we really want to look at if this is something that the board would like to explore. Our numbers are good and they are stable. Um, we know that, you know, in our neighboring district, Lawrence has kind of closed. I think that's a very unique situation that maybe, um, is specific to the Lawrence community. You know, I've been monitoring our numbers on Newsday and looking on the state website. There's now a website where you can, we read the, um, yellow, orange, and red phases. It's a new designation for school districts to determine whether you're, not just districts, but communities, whether you're in a red, um, zone and what would happen if you are. If you're in an orange zone, what the restrictions are, and then a yellow zone. And we were just notified that if a school district is in a yellow zone, we would need to, we're not clear how we would do that, but, uh, do, um, testing, uh, COVID testing with twenty percent of our student, teacher, student staff population every week. Luckily, we're not, um, but there's, on the website, it's great. You just put the address in and it says you have no designation. So, I've been checking every day. Um, it gives you a quick response, um, that we're in a good place. Um, you know, it's hard. You have to watch the numbers by now by community. And it's not by school district because, not like us, but some school districts span a couple of different communities. I know, you know, Baldwin is part of Oceanside, a little bit of Rockaway Center. You know, we're part of Lindbrook and part of East Rockaway, but, um, you know, we're pretty much a smaller community. So, um, in order to do this, we would need to look at the costs associated with, um, purchasing additional barriers, uh, what that would look like in the classrooms, um, you know, and again, wanting to get feedback from parents who probably do a survey. I know we discussed, uh, last week when I met with our president, vice president, about doing, um, a survey, uh, for our students and our, uh, capital, I'm sorry, students and our parents as to how they see things going, uh, because we haven't been heard from them. We really wanted an opportunity to get things, uh, running. It wasn't easy in the beginning, but as, as Mona just said, we now have a rhythm and, um, and although things are not perfect, they're pretty good. And we want to see how parents are feeling, what their comfort level is. As, you know, as teachers, teachers said, I should say, our union president said that our teachers are meeting with all students except for the remote students. They're just not meeting with them all the time at once. But they are meeting with all the students except for the hundred and thirty or so that are on remote learning every other day. And so, um, they are exposed and we are following the rules. And I have to tell you, the kids are unbelievable. Walk through the halls. I have never, never seen a kid, a student without a mask on. They are terrific. Well, we have wonderful kids that follow the rules. They're within the hallways, are, they follow the social distancing as best they can. You know, obviously, it's easier with half the population in the building. But, um, we would like to discuss the possibility if we wanted to consider bringing more grades back. We have a K three right now. We know that in and of itself presents some challenges for teachers because we have one teacher alternating in two classrooms. That's an extra challenge for those teachers, literally going back and forth every day. And would we maybe start by collapsing those grades together? And having sufficient barriers, uh, schools, other districts are telling us that they're using, about three feet, three to four feet, rather than six feet when the barriers are in place. So, it allows for, uh, more students to be in the class.
Would the barriers be required or is that additional?
They are.
That we feel is a good idea?
No, they are.
So, they are.
They're still, yeah, they have not relaxed the social distancing requirement. So, the barriers are like a mitigating, it's a mitigating strategy to mitigate the need for the six feet. You know, the one thing the state has not done that, um, uh, they're not designated by a, to my knowledge, and I could be wrong, but I've never seen it, a percentage, the way restaurants and gyms do, twenty-five, fifty percent. Um, so, schools are not bound by that occupancy percentage, uh, which is why some districts are bringing, well, able to bring all kids back in. We just don't have the space or the personnel to split everyone, um, in the way that we did with K three students. So, it would be really the only way to go about it would be to purchase, uh, the dividers.
Yeah, don't we think the classrooms, you know, right, man, split, because we're married. So, the distancing, we need to, so we would, um, we have to use more of this barrier to allow the rest we possibly alongside, and that here, the rest of the period, so that we can call the, um, rows closer, the desks closer, so that we can collapse, uh, some of the sections that are divided. That would be like a person that can see how that works. We need all of kids, um, in one classroom, potentially in one classroom. How do you, that's a normal situation to keep the point, don't consider. When we're wondering, it's on you.
I think there were a lot of predictions that this wasn't necessarily going to work and people would, you know, let's say, real bets, but, um, you know, how, what would it be like? Oh, we're going to all be closed by October, and that didn't happen. Or not.
We will, yeah. Now, I, I think we, we need to start exploring the possibilities of bringing everybody back and starting with the elementary before continuing, I really should say, because that's a good start. K two, three is back every day. So, if we try to continue with four, five, six and move that, we're getting a better read to things to start and hopefully, you know, where, where more confidence is gained every day. One, one thing I think we all know that East Rockaway does real well and that's social, emotional wellbeing of people. But we know that you're not here presently every day. It's hard to really gauge that, you know? So, you know, I, I'm all for, um, trying to see what it would cost us, uh, again, hoping that our meetings with government officials will start bringing in. Again, the election's coming up. I think we're getting closer to that election date. Maybe it'll be money released. If we're working on numbers this way and with gathering of the parents, from the, from the students, from the teachers' union, how comfortable everybody is, let's keep that moving so that the, the tide is still moving forward, moving parallel. And then hopefully, we'll get a big rep, you know? And maybe we'll see the money's come through and then we'll be able to purchase anything we need to purchase. But at least we'll, we have everything in place. Just look at it, here's how I look at it. You did such a marvelous job, okay? Getting us to where we were on September to open up the building. We want to still do that marvelous job, moving forward, getting everybody back in. So, if we sort of like just wander now and don't do our homework to do everybody, we're sort of like, you know, just saying, okay, we're good. But I think, I think we'll be still moving because there are districts out there that are all moving in. So, why not try and see where we can, we can't. We don't have real numbers of all these ways that we're going to look at that we can't really guesstimate. But now we can really make a good estimate where we should be, we get to that. I would, I would encourage at least that, you know, you continue to work in the past that you are, that you just said, okay, with those three groups. And then also, Jackie, if you could continue, my notes, it's painstaking, you know? As I, I keep looking out for Lori and I'm saying to myself, how'd you figure out these numbers and every other row and this and that? But the bottom line, we all know that, but we have one reason, it's the kids. And that's why, you know, it works that way. So, I, I would appreciate, uh, I don't know, have the rest of the board members.
So, I'm over. I think that one of the really important things also is making sure, as we are being transparent with all the parents and residents and everything, is making sure we give the parents enough time to plan and organize with their work and their job and their schedules. And I'm sure it's not going to happen overnight, but at the same time, just maintaining that level of transparency so that the parents can plan accordingly. I mean, staying home from work and, and traveling here, going there, it's a lot on the parents and everybody else in the whole of us, I'm assuming. So, uh, I think that's super important. But I guess, happy with everyone really talking about what we're thinking and how we're going to do it and what the phase of the process looks like. And like I said, I think the one major thing is probably getting the cost, like the cost of what it's going to take. So, hopefully, we can move quickly and efficiently and, uh, make this happen. And it's really, I mean, the sense along the same.
And I think that's the great work that PTAs can really get involved. They want to get involved, let's meeting, we have. I think this is a perfect time for them to really get involved with us. And then a communication, we're just coming in now. So, we, we have a lot of things moving in this direction. Let's keep it moving.
I think, you know, we, we knew that planning for any, any of our students coming back was going, we needed time. We couldn't put that survey out and say, okay, are you coming back next week? Okay, come on in because classrooms needed, we needed to make sure. At the high school, it's complicated. They go to nine different periods. And so, every child, we have to look at those nine classes for every student to make sure that the capacity, you know, doesn't exceed, um, you know, the regulations with, you know, again, using the barriers as, as mitigation. But, and that's why, um, we have those. And now Jackie can start to work on ordering, uh, barriers because they do have to be made. They are custom-made, um, most of them, and.
One of the versions, if we go with the ones, you know, what we have. Here it is. I've already reached out to the director and asked him, would you use the material that he uses, which is barriers that would be suggested, the one, it's me. If we were to bring everybody into one classroom, the chances are, most likely, we're not using that one. That allowed us to have an inexpensive way to reduce the percent. Because if we're full percent, we're going to be down beside the balance. So, put in a toll, I think, you know, to see if they could use some of the material we have to create the barrier, I would say, as far as, working on that, if they're doing. You know, just try it. And that's why it phases in, good, we buy some outright material and then we put them in the classrooms and then we all barriers off and send them out. So, I save money and yet address.
It's a great idea.
And, and that will take time. And so, that's the phaser that, that Mr. Volbers, that you're talking about. It will happen naturally because we, we can't do it any other way. I will say that I'm still very concerned, and I wrote this up in my meeting with Congresswoman Rice. I know Mr. Volbers, I think we're going to be meeting next week with her. I'm very disturbed that the costs for the barriers, um, which were the highest costs that we sent you in the board update, are not going to be covered by FEMA. I think that's, that is incredibly unfair and unbelievable. Um, those are necessary emergency costs for us to educate our students. Um, the same thing with, um, the fobbers. Fobbers. Like, although they were not as expensive as the barriers, but a fobber, I mean, that's an essential, that's an essential piece of equipment that we need in each building in order to clean every day. We use those fobbers every single day in every single building. And so, it's, I mean, in all three of our buildings and it's just, it's unbelievable. It's not acceptable. So, we, we have to really make that known and advocate, um, however we can, that these costs be covered. We are at the suggestion of Congresswoman Rice. I am sent, it seems that the town of Hempstead had received a large amount of money. Um, and it was suggested to us that we forward some of those expenses to town Hempstead for their evaluation of possible reimbursement. Um, I am taking the first steps to do that, to make sure that they're qualifying expenses. I haven't heard that yet. And we'll continue to pursue that, um, for possible, um, you know, reimbursement of some of the funds. It's just a, really, it's a tremendous burden for the local school districts to, um, to take on without any hope of, you know? And it sounds great. Our audit report was great, but how long will that fund down and sustain all of the costs that we're going to have to hold for? So, we will start looking into that.
Okay, next on the agenda is the budget development process.
Yes, so I ended up a bunch of time on, so I'm going to have those with you. Um, the only thing I really changed, shall I say I added, was just, you know, more discussion started early. Usually, we start, I have copies here, everybody, click up. Um, what I changed this year was we usually started the budget discussion in December. Um, and this, this year, obviously, we're starting in October for obvious reasons. Uh, we see the highlighted ones, basically those are the three areas that we're starting everything with. And that the business office always started in October, right after the audit, we start the budget. Um, but we didn't really start discussions here with the board or with the public until around December. Um, this year, I think it's important we start now, we start talking about the potential state aid cuts that they're talking about again. And you know, we see a ton of money over the spring earmarked that to get us through and keep the focus that we may see in the, uh, the school year we're in right now, conditional COVID and the, uh, potential state aid cuts. So, that we wouldn't have to reduce any kind of program this year. It didn't make sense because we didn't know what kind of health for us for spring. We still don't know what future holds for us. But the economy is not doing well, especially state in New York. Um, so, we want to start discussing this a lot on the board. What I will be giving, we'll start to do now when I return next week is, um, I will roll salaries. That means everybody's contractual salary will roll below. That's always my perspective. And then I will retool it back where we are, just rolling the salaries. So, what does that mean, what kind of money? Because, um, my concern is not the 2021 school year, my concern is the 2122 school year. I mean, the programs, folks, that may be concerned. Um, what does state aid look like next year? Will they freeze it at last year? Well, that even freezing is a problem because we rely on that state aid increase to help cover contractual increases because our tax cap doesn't necessarily cover a large amount of money. So, I will be working on rolling the salaries and looking at the impact to the social security, the health insurance, or also contractual payment amounts in the month of November. Um, and then I'll start to study where the CPI appears to be falling and kind of come up with an estimate of what kind of additional revenue we could possibly, uh, get from tax law. But really, nobody will help the states from as far as state aid. And there's a lot of fear out there that we will not be able to increase the state aid in the near, in the near 2022. Um, that is what our fund balance and our reserves will be used for, to help maintain progress. We need to start to talk about it because it's, it's going to be a really complicated. So, that's where you see that the budgets will be going out next week to the, uh, buildings and the administrators, various departments. I've asked for them to take it to me before the holidays so that we have a holiday recess to look at it. Um, and January is our first mock session, but we will be discussing, we will supply for ten minutes each mock session. However, just to give you an idea, um, different, um, yeah, different, like actually where we are. Okay, here we are, we're rolling the salaries, we're rolling the benefits. This is what we all, we need to, so much to pray, so much to pray. And then hopefully, y'all have a, you know, stuff out of town. And I feel that I need really hard CPI and I'm not studying this.
Jackie, you're going to start with a roll, go with the administrators? The next year where you're just going to say, you know, it is what it is because how, how can they come in with budgets that, you know, do the work with things that they conceive might need, they might need, but it's going over even more than we have. So, are they going to roll from last year?
Well, with the building projects, it's based on enrollment, because there's a new asset requirement. Uh, so each, each, uh, building is allocated a certain amount of money per student. So, we need to save down. So, based on the enrollment, there are a lot of buildings like that. So, in the two elementary buildings in Owen, it's increased significantly. So, both of them, the high schools, it looks like it's going to increase slightly. So, it'll be slightly higher. The high schools, it looks like it's going to be pretty slightly, so it'll be slightly not. The departmental budgets, like the athletic's budget, his coaching salaries and stuff, it's not really quite as budgetless, salaries, it's outside. But the other parts of the budget will be given as a rollover. And then if there's needed money to be some kind of contractual increases, then we will. Everybody's going to be asked, eaten, laughed, invested. Generally, that's how you start out. So I always, then everybody writes a wish list and Jackie keeps the wish list. I always have the wish list and then we add things and force to draft more. There are some things that we could afford this year, we buy them. You know, so this year, we may not, that wish list may remain intact as a wish list. You know, each year we try to fix it, you know, if it's much. Yeah, everybody will be asked to remain in class department unless there's a contractual obligation in which they can't find those.
That's great. Thank you. And thank you for, again, being proactive, getting us out in front of the best we can as we see things unrolled from the government side, money that might come in, might not come in. At least we're ahead of the game to make the adjustments at the end. Thank you so good. That's a thank you.
Today's prime day, maybe the CPI before. Maybe that's what it is. Well, we're helping them. Got your day.
Prime day.
That's just a reminder daily. Yeah, we're very advised today.
They are.
Okay, we have the state controls report for extra classroom activity part, report examination number 2020M-85.
So we handed this out last, last year, we do a year. It's been about a year and a half now. We had the office of state control and required us that they would be doing an audit. They do an audit and we provide videos in schools, which is our term. And what they do is they come in and they sample each financial area of a school district. And then determining, after they look at it and they see what they feel, whether it was substantiated, any kind of expenses and what kind of risk factor, based on each area, based on the pool. What they determine is what they're going to look at further based on risk assessment. They determined that the student activity fund was the highest list in the analysis, which I think is a tremendous outcome, which shows the other areas of the school district. They feel was at high, S Y O S. Jackie won't take the credit, but that's really significant because they don't come in like the internal auditors do and pick an area on a cycle to look at. They come in and look at everything and they test all the areas. And so just the fact that this was the only area they found that was a risk or a risk area is really significant. We had an audit, I think it was my second or third year here. And it was also not terrible, but we had some more significant areas that were concerned. So I think this is, just this in and of itself is really something to congratulate Jackie on that this was the only area that they identified to look at. So they did look at it and they look at it for two years. Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen were their four years. Seventeen, eighteen, we had the student activity account. Fund was not an area that my office had looked at, you know, I started in late 2016. So we had identified that that was an area we knew we needed to strengthen controls. And so we put a bunch of new procedures and controls in place to get eighteen, nineteen, I believe. So this basically covered one year of which is outdated, of the old procedures, and one year which was starting, the new procedures. So they were here for several months, maybe eight or nine months. And then they go back to their office and they start to look at their reports. And usually what happens, I've been to several of the tours in the past, is they will sit with us and they will go over what they call their exception list with myself, my team and show us what they found. Because of COVID, they didn't have. So the first thing we, first time we saw the exceptions was when we all got the sweepstakes. So you'd see that there was quite a bit of exceptions on backup or money collected. So what we did is we asked them to identify each and every deposit that they had pulled and earmark was an exception. What we found was 75% of the ones that they're 102 that they identified were in the 1718 school year, which did not surprise me. The 1819 though did surprise me. So what we did is we pulled the archive because we don't, we don't have a formula to store all records. Our records go to storage facilities, we pulled the 1819 records. Each and every one that was identified, we found several discrepancies. We didn't feel that they were inadequate. And so we contacted the state control's office and said, you know, we should go and see what we've got wrong. And that's a problem because obviously we continue to do it wrong because the office sees one. So we'd like a little further discussion. So we pulled the package together and the controller, the order of the control's office came, picked up the package, it's starting to reveal the means out so that we can both, we can discuss it and see if maybe there was some misunderstanding or if we have to change what we're doing. Because clearly what they've selected is what is part of practicing. And we had the, our own internal auditors assist us with developing those procedures. And they are procedures that I've used many times in the prior district. They have passed the office of state control's order, we passed. And I think it might get a little bit of a, usually had to do with triple press numbered receipts. You saw that written up? And yes, we did that every time we receive cash, we issue a triple plate receipt. So that the number is in the receipt book and it's attached to the deposit. But we don't do that when we receive checks because we have copies of every check that we receive. So if we got, you know, 15 checks, there was no copy of the receipt. We don't give a receipt or a check. We don't feel like necessary, the check is going to be received. And that's a procedure we follow and we're going to ask those. A significant number of the exceptions were only checks. So we've got a little bit of a discrepancy as to what we feel was a potential exception. And the lead auditor said that he would like to look at it himself and maybe we should just do it. So we haven't had the exit interview. What obviously is only draft, but we may draft until we have an exit interview and that exit interview will be delayed at this point until they've finished going back to what those. I did not look at 1718. It could have been, some of those other ones could have been in the 1718 too as well. But at this point, I knew 1718 was something that I needed to have reviewed. And I knew it was concerned that are new procedures. And we went along now, this is earlier, were the right procedures. So I really thought it's not a big deal. That's where we are at.
So the two things they have recommendations is really what I want to talk about tonight. You know, they have the faculty council and the faculty audit that they recommend. What's your feel on that job, Peter?
We had what, we had faculty advise, not, we didn't have both in my life. Actually, I complied. We didn't have a faculty. Faculty treasurer that oversaw and took in their own records. I mean, I do believe that each club should have their own records. But that is not a part of being one and the advisor should be teaching the children, maintain their records. But we did, in my prior district, they did have one in the building that everybody recorded to as opposed to the business office, it had to be in that second layer. Is this like a second person to oversee?
Who served in that role?
A teacher. But we had, yes, they got, they got stipend. Both districts, both my, larger districts, but they both did have stipends back. And that person was the go-to person. All the advisors would go to them and everything would feed through them and then they would be also tracked. We would all be comparing, we'd be comparing our records to their records. We each have our own set of books, the orders were devoted to books to make sure we were in sync, reports were verified. We do have monthly reports that we send to the clubs from my office. But we would compare faculty advisor with a monthly report and sign up that would come with us each month. And then that faculty advisor would have to deal with each individual.
And each building would have a faculty advisor or you have one for all of it?
We had, as you mentioned, my prior district, we had one at the middle school or one at the high school. It's a little too separate. We never had one of the elementary buildings, but that wasn't necessary. I'm in the district before that, two high schools, one at the top school. So it was really here, we don't need one much more. One for building and second. Jackie, are these recommendations requirements? Don't worry. So if we decide to handle that in a different way, it's not something we'd be citing for. Absolutely not.
The one thing I do like is that, one of the things that everybody understands in, because in athletic, we do a lot of stuff. And rules have changed, is my thought. But the one thing that really hurts anybody doing this is the fact of what work that the coach or moderator of the club has to take on beside doing the good work with kids. And it takes away from the good work with kids all the time. So when I saw this, you know, and I know that when I worked in the city, one of the things we had was called a COSA. And I, you know, they're talking, at first they had somebody up at Malibu. And I think it's money well spent in the fact that if you have a faculty advisor, a faculty council, whatever you want to call it, that was the one that was now taken from all of the clubs and everybody in there. It makes the traffic in the business office lower. It makes the traffic for the coach or moderator lower because they have somebody now who's a seat in the area and is taking real vested interests because they're getting a little stipend to do with COSA. So, you know, one of the things I like more to think about for the future is, you know, as we're going through this, Jackie gives us more from the actual audit itself is that, you know, maybe something we should consider to lessen the load on those moderators and coaches who are doing a young'un's job already and trying to get some extra for the kids. And there's always extra. We always, everybody wants the fanfare. We all want, you know, these rock, the rocks and the labels and stuff. It's all good, but it really does become very, very cognizant. Jackie, you know, it's a difficult task a lot of times for your office to constantly go after those reports and get them in and so on and so forth with everything else. I mean, the monies, you know, we've looked at those three years of monies, they're hard monies. It's a lot of money that comes in. It's a lot of money. So to me, it justifies having somebody who, because you have board, board is coming in, who is really versatile. How you guys feel about that? Would it be someone who's in a, sorry.
No, no.
I was just going to say, is it, would you choose someone who's comfortable working in this field? That's your answer, it would be.
Like in my case, it's the business teacher.
Yeah. I'm wondering, reasonable judges or to spend the time, a little confidence to do these things.
What, can you explain, I mean, it sounds like it's been just like a little different than what I'm used to. So could you explain what the worst results, you would call them back now, Mark, that you shared with us?
So it is the business teacher. And basically all the clubs, anytime they have money, I can only speak to it, but I see yearbook. So the yearbook, you have money come in for the yearbook and now the money has to be turned into the business office. He gets all the money and collects it, meets with the person in charge of that club or that sport. And they have to fill out, I guess, a certain type of receipt. And then he brings everything over to the business office and he is basically the coordinator.
So everything is, so that's how I know the advisor, so that the money doesn't go, the money is collected by the student, by all of the students. Because the club has, you know, still has to do a lot. Because that's a, where the charter of the clubs, that they have to be responsible.
And the kids are learning how to match that money.
Right. And those children are always in our office. We always have the children and the advisors, a lot of times when the children come to us and they're in our office and yes, and they bring their paper work in. So instead of coming to us, it comes to the faculty office.
Right. So it's exactly that. You need money for your class to go get, buy decorations and whatnot. You need to put that request in, it goes through him, he goes to the business office and then comes back.
So he's there advising students. That if it works not complete, you need to do X, Y, and Z. Yes. And then people, and they go.
And it has, if it gets done in more time, then no, no, you know, negative on your office because you're doing a million things, but it's done in more time, basically. Guess what? They hunt that person down in the hall because, you know, they find them, they want to get that movie. So it works a lot more smoothly in the transition.
I can find out. I can look at my teacher contract and see what the stipend is for that position. And I did reach out to the person that's doing it, asked for a job description if you have any problems. So he was going to reach out to the public advisor. And he did, he, like the overall public advisor, and see if he had a job description. And just so we have something to look at.
That also means if you're office dealing with one person as opposed to a large group of students.
Absolutely. There's a lot of activities in this business office. You know, it's very crowded, you know, now we have to stay in that hole. It does get very, it does get very crowded at home. And that is, it sounds like exactly how I make fun to my classes. And then we yap, person before the company, yap, the different, we just jump.
Is that a ten hour?
No, it's stipend, stipend.
Okay, we will all, athletic complex, David Snow, walk away the fundraiser.
Oh, this is an easy one, I think. Mr. Mark came to us with the idea, as we develop the new athletic complex, that at the entrance way, which he also pictures out, which was beautiful, it's going to be beautiful, the renderings were lovely, that we create a brick pathway where people can purchase the bricks and have them engraved. And it would be a fundraiser, but it would also add to the aesthetic beauty of the. And I think people would take a lot of pride in that. So if the board is in agreement with that, Mr. Grillo said that he would incorporate that into the design. And as we get closer, you know, we can start to share that and share the renderings out. Start to fundraise for that. You can buy a brick, have someone's name put on it and really enhance the beauty as well as the significance for people in the community of the athletic complex.
Well, yeah.
I think, I think they kind of have a lot of bricks there. We're probably going to need a, we have a lot of this community. What we had talked about with the PTA, in my old district, they did it in the front. They had like a concrete area, much like, you know, we have the grassy areas, we have the path. We do have opportunities to expand. So we had talked to the PTA about it and I think the PTA was interested and then I'm not really sure, it kind of just fell off the radar. But, you know, that's also, if we wanted to do that simultaneously, you know, if you see that there's a huge interest, kind of the overflow might be that maybe people want the brick, it could be in the oval anywhere. That would be significant and not limited to just athletes. It could be in any part of the school. And it's really not that hard to do. You can take up some, rather than break up the concrete, take away some of the grass, you know, not huge parts of the grass, but four parts of the grass around, around the walkway or on the walkway. So I really think knowing this community, it would have a lot, I think, everybody would agree. It's like the chairs and the inventory.
What would the funds go towards?
That would, if you ask Mr. Mark, I'm sure he has left the program. I think the music, if we expanded it, you know, and considered other locations, it could go to other, it could go to the school, it could go to not divide it up, scholarships, right? You know, I think that, we didn't even get that far. We were looking to know if it was interesting.
Yeah, I think anybody that played on that field would vibe right.
Exactly.
They did this at, I think, when they brought the field in and it was a Stella and we was, and they have a grill big enough, really big. So I think it's great.
Okay, great. So this just came in, I thought I would share it with you. These are two renderings that Mr. Grillo sent over today. So maybe you wanted to hook up on this. For everybody? You got enough?
We have enough.
There's two different ones, we need to take a look. Here.
Yeah.
Yes. Exactly.
One on the side.
Which one's this? This one?
Yeah, you got it.
We all put it in the same one. And I think there's other features that. And I think there's other features that you probably could better possess.
How do you feel about that orange, also, in the infield of baseball? I know, I keep looking at it.
That's scary.
It's a scary thing. There we go. And, right, so you have the orange here that would run, so, and the seagulls running right through your baseball infield, and it's running right here. So the softball's not there, it's on the outskirts. But baseball really is going to be right in the middle, smack in the middle.
I would almost, the end zone fine would be out the outer side. And we talked about that, like, Coach Black actually was doing.
We did that.
So this, so you would want this cut to end there, and there, and then this all be, take away this orange one and the white one.
Yep. And then, my opinion also would be that the rocks in the end zone will be black, off with white. Black, orange, not black and white. Yeah, personal film.
Black would be, is why blacks is going to be better too. I don't know, maybe you guys know better. The reflection of a baseball on a black background versus an orange, what do you think of that? Is there a difference in that, or really the same? You know? I'm just trying to figure the contrast, because again, that end zone, you see where the end zone runs, right? Running right into, right over for a face.
Yeah.
Right over it. You know, I'm thinking that, is it?
I don't know. I don't know what to say with that.
Could that be filled during the season? Could that be painted?
No, that's not a bad, smoke crosses either.
You know?
Do you want to try and switch those specific little pieces somehow? You know, during the, in season?
You mean, pick up the church and, but then aren't you also going to have the cross playing there?
You will.
Something you've had, he says, a copy or using a part of the cross here.
Well, the field itself, we run with these ones here. So that's the field itself, so we're just talking about the painting here. So field paint is, is a thing that I would be concerned about. Did his boss interview you, Jack?
They were bailed out today, just late this afternoon, and he did not weigh in yet.
Wouldn't we want to just get some weight from them and then look at it again? I mean, the ones, I love them too, but they got the patterns there, right?
Yep.
But I'm just wondering, Joe, it's like during the fourth of football season, right? That that couldn't be painted orange. Leave it in the white and just be painted orange or a black, whatever you want. You know, a regular field paint. Season's over, it's not there for the spring because it wears right off. You know? And that's how it works on field turf.
Yeah, they can match the orange and, you know.
It's a good idea. They do that on field turf. The Giants, look at the Giants' X, right, when they turn that field over. You don't possibly paint it back over.
It's a good idea, but that's, that's not.
Why don't we let David get up and really weigh in, since he has seen it's really not there? Maybe they make.
He saw it, I mean, he just didn't answer. Yeah, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to feel it.
Maybe him and the coach would weigh in. You have that concern, right?
No, I get it, it's, it's, it's best field here and the way this is. Yeah. First, yeah, I get it, Cody, I didn't realize you could need it. I'm thinking, I was still stuck on, well, we did it in here. I figured we would just demarcate that during football season. Because you need, right, because you need to know where the lines are, you know, where the field.
Right, but they sew them in, so they sew.
Right, right, but this you would do, even in football season, you would just run that in. That's what I was still thinking. I kind of get it.
We can't, we'll have to explain it.
There you go.
I just don't want to get wrong. I just don't want to take the play.
How about, would you feel dirt brown or an orange? Could it be orange, the other orange, right?
Whether, could that be the same orange?
Yeah, that'd be the same orange. All right.
Yep.
Right?
It's coming along.
But with nineteen heroes recognition.
So I know we had talked about this, you know, being a, the conversation came out of board recognition night, and feeling we would like to recognize others. And so we brought it back to the whole administrative team. They all felt, to be honest, a little uncomfortable with selecting one or two people and highlighting them because they feel that everybody really did an outstanding job. Everybody went out of their way, and people are continuing to do that. And, you know, sometimes singling people out can make other people feel uncomfortable. And so we talked a little bit about it, what else, how else could we do it? And it was suggested that we maybe go and ask each unit to pick someone. And I got some feedback on that, and they felt equally. But I didn't speak to all the units, but I spoke to a couple of units, and they said, well, that may not go so well either. And so I had thought that maybe, and again, we don't have to do it next week because it doesn't have to be the same time. You know, COVID is still going on, hopefully it'll go away soon. But maybe, you know, just one night recognizing in general all of the groups by either asking each of you to say a few words about the custodians, the teachers, the beauty. I think it certainly helped you with that. And, you know, recognizing all of them and being specific as to why they're heroes. And doing, you know, a small speech. We talked about the possibility of, I don't, I left my, do you have your Jimmy badge?
Oh, no, why, why don't I ask?
Then just be.
Am I getting Jimmy badge?
Have the kids do. You know, have them, you know how they did the footprint type of video? Have them do something like that, where they're the ones talking about. You know, making it, like, do the writing assignment and then present it to the kids.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I like it. I'd love to talk about it. If you're outside listening, I like it.
I love it.
Yeah.
You know how you own the school year, remember, last year?
Yes.
Going to kids.
It was powerful. I loved it.
It was powerful. They all presented, they all, they had the teacher's name on there, on, and they, you know, they presented. That was their teacher, that was who they, you know, the Roma, you know, and they talk. It was really, it was powerful. They put statements, they wore it all along the way, they just real quick, and the more the better. But I love that idea.
I love that idea.
You know, and they could do that, even, you know, as far as like doing some, I don't know, like, it's not commercial, but it's.
PSA.
PSA, thank goodness. Like PSA, you know, the guy writes the email. And they do their own PSA, their own phones, and they just send them all in, and straighten together, right?
And again, I think it would be nice to say that the Board of Education has, you know, asked the students to put this presentation together. So you are recognizing, you know, it's the board's recognition, because it was your idea. So it was the board's, it's the board's recognition of, and this is how we're demonstrating.
Put that in there.
Okay. Hopefully we will see, I will, I'll see if we can do it November, November ninth.
Do it like after they like.
Our next meeting is after the election. We'll reheat that.
Wow.
All right, snow day pilot. We knew this was all coming.
Okay. Okay, however, so we talked about this, and although it sounds like a wonderful idea, it sounds like a great idea. What would be necessary for us to do this is for every single student to have a device. Because we have, we don't, because we have K through three coming in, the only K through three students that have a device at home are the remote students. So we would actually then have to distribute, because we don't know when we're going to have a snow day. We can't anticipate it. We wait till the last minute, we, we're up at four AM, the superintendent's, we make the decision on the phone. And so we don't know, we always try not to, we try as hard as we can, especially Oceanside, it's the whole, that all the time. The board is tough, that doesn't want a snow day. And so it would be really difficult to plan for. When we thought, when we had the first closure in the high school, and we went to remote learning, we discussed what would happen if we had to close one of the elementarys. Because of that reason, the K through three do not have a device at home. And so we did a survey to see how many families, how many families have device, have devices at home on their own that they would be able to use, that they wouldn't need to deploy, that we wouldn't need to deploy a device for them. And out of the parents who responded, there were, there were 256 parents that responded. And 153 indicated that they have devices for their children, and 40% said they do not have a device for their child. Because if we were to go full remote on a snow day, one device would not be enough. The kids in five through 12, or four through 12 now that have devices, would be on their device all day. Because you would assume it would be like a regular remote day. We'd go period by period, and instruction would occur all day long except for lunchtime. And so they would need to eat devices. My husband's office is, he works for a big law firm. And they, I always ask him very fast if he can give us. He's given us a lot of furniture over the years, all of Jackie's office, my chairs. They donate a lot of things. So they're going to be donating, let's see, three, four devices. We're going to pick up the first group of devices. So we will have backup devices because we were not sure when the Chromebooks were going to come. And if we did need to close down, we didn't have enough devices to give to every K through three student. So luckily, we've not had to close school, but there would be, we figured, we did have a thousand devices on hand. But these devices will be picking up little by little, beginning the first group on Friday, will really help us. But do we just give everyone a device and let it sit at home in the event of a snow day? And I'm just surprised that the State Education Department is considering this. Today we were discussing it, I mean, upstate, Benny Rosa, I don't know if you readily update their priorities for the State Education Department is equity in the digital divide. And so clearly, there's still a digital divide upstate. And they're the places that have a lot more snow days than we do, and they do not have digital equity. They don't have, everybody does not have Wi-Fi, and every district does not have a device that's been deployed. So I don't think it's necessarily a priority to us. Our teacher's contract requires us to make up snow days, certain amount of snow days. And we have a lot of days in our calendar. So, you know, we have 182 days in our teacher's contract, and we always have to find a place to take off a few days. Some districts, like Jericho's 186, most districts have 183 or 184. In our last contract, we did try for more days, but instead of four days, we got maybe five snow days. So if we call a snow day in February, we just have a less holiday in May at what is a critical time, April, for the regions. So I couldn't see us deploying all of those devices to sit in people's homes and then not being able to anticipate a snow day. If we close, we will make sure people have devices and we will have time. You know, even if, like, we close on the dime, the next day, people can come in and pick up devices. In a snow day, we can't do that. Although we did ask Lee to go out on a sled. His dog heard him sled, would he consider, I mean, you know, he does everything else. Would he consider delivering devices? But we thought that way. So we're not recommending you participate. I'm very happy about that. There's something to be said for kids to have that one snow day. We haven't had one in like years.
Right, exactly, to my point.
When you get that phone, you just can go outside and play in the snow, and maybe just, it gets to the kid. And I feel like so much is taken away from them. If they get a snow day, they should go out and enjoy it.
Change the one day here, they won't.
Yeah, exactly. There's nothing better than that.
Right.
The teachers, when I go in the classroom to visit some of the, they go, this is the lady that decides when to have a snow day. It's all, oh.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready at this point in time to really say we can actually do this without trying to rush out. If the vice should get, now, the ones haven't come in yet, so why don't we delay that in the future, next year, again?
Sounds good, thank you.
Use of district logo.
Okay, so this, Jackie has received a request from an individual who lives in one of our school districts. Who is an entrepreneur, she does a small business. And she is, she's been contacting Jackie repeatedly, asking for permission to use our logo on tie-dye masks because she's made them for other places, and people have asked her, and she would like our permission to use our logo on those masks and sell them.
Does it kind of affect the whole?
That's, we're not recommending the collective change. But she, yeah, that would be, PTA, why don't they do that? Right. But right now, she is, it's really, I think, an entity, a private entity, that she's asking to use our logos so that she can sell them to individual families. And I think it would cut into our fundraising opportunities.
I don't know, if you've got a person to, not prepared to have some, you know, just from the background, it just sounds like.
Who they are selling to. So there were, you know, we did consult with our attorney because we always do to try and do our diligence. It was a very convoluted answer, we possibly can do it, I just don't think we should do it. Some would think it is not, right, because it's not going to benefit the district. And to enter into some kind of a business agreement with her where she would, I think that would be cumbersome work for Jackie. And, you know.
What's wrong, say, sorry, yeah, that's it.
So we're going to tell her now.
Okay.
Thank you. But we did, we did want you to go there.
Thank you. Transportation.
So I did let you know a couple of things going forward, I think. We had found that we had four families, three families, four children, that were riding the bus to St. Adams, I mean, possibly working in the business office, through the transportation. And, you know, the applications come in April, move all on remote. And what she did when she got the applications was, you know, and my fault, absolutely, because I have no idea that St. Adams had for the students, you know, some areas within our district boundaries were less than two miles. So what she did is check to do and transport to St. Adams, yes, we do, and she ran the transportation. Only brought, to be brought to our attention by another person in the district that did not get transportation because they did not apply for it, because they were aware that they were not eligible. So it's brought to our attention, we also worked into it, and then we went ahead and checked every child. And we did find three vendors, I did notify them. They all received notification, I haven't heard of any family yet. We gave them until the end of October, enough time for them, because legally, we cannot transport. It did not cost the district any money because they were on a route that I think was banned. And that, I had received a banner, the state vice was a perceived route, it wasn't a banned route. It didn't cost us any additional money, but we can. So it's what we do now, if somebody came up to you, we said, we apologize, we now have a better procedure in place. And I'm a little bit more familiar with the fact that we have some schools, that we actually have two schools that we transport to. Some students in the, some addresses in the district are less than two miles, and some are not.
Jackie, when you say we can't do it, is that because of our two mile restriction and use of sacrifice funds? Is that, I just want to know if somebody did it for.
We don't have the legal authority due to the board policy. Yes, that's okay. Once the board policy is tested, we don't have the legal authority to override what has been, because transportation is approved by vendors, I mean, by residents, so we don't have the legal authority to override it.
Is there any liabilities to the end of the month that are still on our bus, like, after something happens? There's no, like, legal liability?
No, they're allowed, we're allowed, you know, we found the error, we notified them, we tried. No, there are, uh, we're allowed, you know, we found the error, we notified them in Friday, we do, we tried to appeal, and, um, we're fine because we are covered insurance wise. You know, but it didn't make, you know, they had gotten it in September, it only makes sense to give them a couple of weeks. You didn't have the opportunity to fly, because we were notified back in the spring, that they were eligible, we didn't have enough time to fly.
Normally, wouldn't we have somebody that goes over those, uh, schools, so make sure that, you know, the ones who outside that radius?
Oh, what, what used, well, what happened before we got the new person? She knew, because before I knew which school districts had, had addresses that were partially or within a two mile radius. So, the new person, and I, and maybe would, did not know that, oh, Lady Crease is one of them, and, um, St. Agnes, of course, I didn't know that, St. Agnes. But those two schools, some of our residents are over two miles and some are not. And as with probably, as we brought the applications in, she checked, did we transport to this school? If it was no, we never transported to the school, she didn't wait in a mile. But this time, she looked at, "Oh, yeah, we transferred to St. Agnes, we had seven kids last year," and she granted it, not realizing what we needed, said seven kids. But this particular address is qualified for the two mile.
It's the same thing with the maximum, which is fifteen miles, and so if you live in the north end of town, you might qualify to get transportation to a particular school, but if you live all the way down by the water, that can make a big difference, and you wouldn't qualify because you would exceed the fifteen.
So it's, it, it can be, especially if, and it, it is, you know, it's, it's a lesson learned by myself. Um, that's a county, so it's, and, you know, it's two miles, we still be in state district. Second county, so it's, nobody's two miles close, unless you live in the state. So now we, um, we now know where all the schools are. She went through every single student department, ran the, um, the mileage, attaches to the application now, position. We love it. Does not happen again.
Really? Yeah.
The part was no cost of district, which was, that was a big part.
And the last item on the agenda is superintendent evaluation tool. We had asked for that to be put on for the last time we met, the work session. We had just set out the, uh, school board's evaluation, and really didn't have the opportunity to look through that and see how that would be. You also would just be in conduct, looking into our present evaluation system, superintendent. And, uh, just wanted to know if there was any feedback on that from more members of the school board's evaluation, alright? Versus the present way we're doing it. And is that something that you would rather wait a full year and you turn, I mean, you know, and more members to see this year through, like Kristen and Pete sort of last year, um, but you, you guys have it. So, really just feedback to see what direction to go.
I read through both of them, and again, I don't, and I went through the first process. The board's one seems a, not, I don't want to say easier, but a little more defined, that's what we're looking for, as opposed to what you guys use it. But I'm, I'm fine with it. So like, the board's one gave you a subject, you know, it gave you a listing of what was going on, and, you know, how to put it, and it gave you a whole outline. I just seen, again, I don't want to say easier, just more defined.
Correct, and that actually allows the superintendent to choose those areas, right? And she's defining whatever, she sets his goals that year, and then puts them in there.
But again, I'm fine with it, I feel like it looks. Yeah.
I feel the same way. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm fine in a way, the other one does seem a little bit more defined. Uh, whatever you guys feel is the best, as most of your educators, uh, people that follow you, and that.
Like I said, we, first time no one will follow you on the other one, whatever you guys would rather, to be honest with you.
So Pete, Chris, you guys have gone through, you know, both myself, what do you?
I like a different case, but I, I don't want to, like, you feel comfortable with as well, um, you know, what we have before, is that.
I, I think this is more reasonable because the other one had so, was so onerous, there were many elements. This has five areas, I think, with different components. I would like to maybe sit down and go through it with president, vice president. And maybe pick which might be relevant. My only concern this year is, um, with COVID, it seems so much has been, it may not happen in the way, you know, we're trying very hard, we keep talking, we, I mean, we have this conversation every Monday. We have to get to the regular work, you know, every time we try to talk about that, it's, you know, there's, you know, just, of course, I'd ask our, the administrators, right, um, action goals and, um, department's strategies, you know, their, their smart goals, and they submit their action plan, and a lot of that is, it's, it's, I mean, not a lot, all of it is based on strategic plan, and then, you know, any other specific areas that they would like to focus on, but everything really relates to the, um, you know, to the strategic plan. So we do have that. We're hoping, I'm hoping to resurrect, you know, to go back to that committee in November if we're still, you know, if things get a little better, we'll be, uh, in here if we have to. If not, we'll just, I'll be with all four subcommittees, uh, remotely and, and work that way. But I really think the strategic plan needs to be updated, but my reservation with that is that we don't have any data. And the data is so important. It's, it's not important to rate the teachers, but it's so important to set our goals. Um, where are we? And, you know, we started to talk amongst ourselves about the idea of, of who lived in school, or applying for, um, other types of recognition. And that's where the data really is, is critical. I mean, we can't, we can't apply for those things without data. So I, I would only be a little concerned this year in that I don't know where COVID's going to go, setting goals that we may not be able to achieve. Because I also don't want to put, um, too much pressure on everybody who's just, right now, are just trying to keep their heads in the water, to be frank, and, you know, keep things going. So, um, what, I'd be happy to sit with the goal and talk about it. I don't want to be adverse to it. And I think this is a better option than the super E-bow.
I, I think that you just have a good idea. Maybe, um, during the course of this year, five areas. If we took one area per, you know, work session, it just bounced around the ideas, take that one area, bounce around the ideas. So that we're developing it, and as you're developing everything else, it's looking for the data driven, with work all the time. You know, I do agree, it, it's a managing problem right now. Goals oriented stuff at this point in time takes that seat, it's managing the health, safety, well-being of every student, you know, the teacher, the district. So there's no doubt, it's not a good time to put this in, you know? Um, I would like though, if we can continue conversation, because I, I just think that the school board one is so much more, um, it's accurate in the sense of looking at a vision and realizing that vision in, in a format like a group. You know, I've heard of something to that. And we don't have to, there's no money involved, it's zero cost. It's a form, right there, zero cost there, and it was just a lot. So I, I, I think you guys got to go through this year too, I do hope that it's easy, because you'll see when we start putting that together. You know, it's quite a bit of research that you go back on your notes, and so meetings to get, to gather, put in there. But of course, you know, I, I think we're in a good spot, actually, if we all can agree that, you can work on it during the course of the year. Work sessions, uh, maybe the free planning, we could get more definition, then we could draw a meeting. Very good, very good. Excellent. Okay, then, do you have anything that you'd like to add, uh, just in the time, to agenda, like, we need to sort of oversight?
I just want to go back to the field coloring and stuff like that, real quick.
I'll take those now.
No, no, it's, uh.
Yes, yeah.
So for, it's Mr. Villalobos.
Really?
Really. So, I mean, I could easily email someone what we're thinking, but, uh, you know, for the, where it says rocks in the end zone, Joe mentioned before that we'd like to at least see it with a black base and a white outline in the end zones. And tell me when you're ready for the middle ER.
So black letters, white outline.
That's right. We'd like to.
More orange and black.
Yeah, just the reverse of it is.
And then, in the middle where it says ER, we'd like to also see, um, orange ER, black outline, and then a white outline around it. That's what we are just going to discuss during this.
I remember that, yeah.
It'd be, it'd be nice to see that tricolor in the middle, like, it's going to pop the whole field.
So you want orange, white, and black, or orange, black, and white?
Orange, black, and white, yeah.
The white will be on the outside.
That's correct. Yeah. It's going to, it's going to look this way, right?
And then the question for John would be is that, um, whatever one we go, color, can that be painted in during the course of the football season? Uh, so it's not on top of, especially for me in the presentation.
Well, we can leave it orange, green, would green be easier to match in an orange?
Yeah.
And I'll, we have the essence of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever's easier to match.
So you want it painted green during baseball?
Right, or vice versa, it was Joe saying, but they're the experts. Yeah, they do, they're in the stadium now. Just beautiful.
Yeah, yeah.
Incredible.
Maybe a little, you know, not perfectly, but you feel like round ball first, and have an orange around it.
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll be, I'll be turned off. It's all honesty.
What's your sport?
Football.
Any other?
That sounds good to me. Okay, so I'd like to, uh, motion that we bring the work session, uh, to closure, and it's seven fifty-nine.
So.
And second, second, and this week, now, now I'd like to make a motion that we go back into executive session. X, eight o'clock. You have a motion? Over. Second?
Second.
Second, eight o'clock. Okay, yeah. Thank you very much, everybody.
Cut.
Good evening.
Me, should I get you one of those?